This conference will now be recorded.
I don't think we have very many on the call just yet.
Okay.
But I know, like, we just have Commissioner James for about a half an hour. So we can start, and if you want to go ahead and open the meeting, and then I have some opening remarks and things like that that we can get through, and hopefully other people will join.
Sure, all right, I'll just treat it like a regular. Go ahead and call these special work session to order. It is 5:30. And I guess we'll start with the, let's just start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Go into public comment. Anyone in the room tonight, or has anyone signed up by chance to speak?
I have not, but if you want to give it a minute, see if anybody wants to identify in chat if they have any comments and. I'm not seeing anything coming through on chat.
All right, so we can just do the acceptance of a work session agenda. Do you want a motion for that, or?
We typically do, yes.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the work session agenda for tonight?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner James moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner James moved to approve. I think that was, is that Commissioner Stevens who seconded?
It is.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on that? Anyone opposed? All right, we'll consider that accepted. Suzette is going to facilitate this tonight, and that way I can participate, and she knows a lot more about what's going on. So I'll just turn it over to Suzette.
Thank you, Chair. So I just, I wanted to sort of talk about how things are going to work tonight, because it's going to be a little different, obviously, than most of our council meetings. I know you're, you're so used to our council meetings being absolutely perfect, but tonight will be less than perfect, because we don't have a lot of information, and we still have holes. So we're going to go through as much of this as we can tonight. We may have to do a second meeting, a second work session, and/or maybe just do this at our October council meeting. So I just wanted to prep you at a time that you will see tonight in the presentation that you still have some, some places that are blank, that we we need, either need more information or to more time to look at. So with that, what's going to happen, you're also going to see a lot of us jumping in and out of the meeting. I'm going to be jumping in and facilitated conversations. Madora is going to be doing the bulk of the presentations and walking us through. You're also going to, we're going to be doing an online exercise on a whiteboard, so that's why I put in the chat, if you have a device handy, a computer, iPad, whatever, where you can type, type in some comments, that would be great. That is not the only way you get to participate, but that, but that is one of, a good way to do that. And we're going to, so it's going to be Madora, and you'll see Alex a little bit in there, and Becky's in the background. She's, she's helping run this as well. So with that, we have a lot to get through. So if there, is there any questions about how this, this is going to work tonight, Brent, from anybody? Okay, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Madora.
Great, thank you. And thanks, everyone, for joining us on a extra meeting. So our goals for tonight's work session is to do a very quick review of the background behind the greenhouse gas rule that's being proposed through the Transportation Commission, and a quick review of what's in that rule. We have a few pieces of additional data and staff analysis that we can bring to you beyond what we brought at the September discussion and the TAC September, September TAC meeting yesterday. And then we want to spend a lot of time at the end brainstorming the comments that staff have developed, and then your ideas for what we should be incorporating into the North Front Range MPO's comment letter to CDOT on this greenhouse gas rule. So a bit on the timing of that, what we are planning to do is staff will draft that letter using what we hear tonight, and then bring it to the October 7th council meeting. Ideally, we can approve it at that meeting, but if we need more time, maybe that's just a discussion, and we have another work session. So that's still to be determined based on, you know, how quickly information comes in and how quickly we can coalesce around our comments. The other main goal for tonight is to prioritize comments from the NFR MPO for the two rulemaking hearings that CDOT is holding within Lammert County or Weld County. And those are scheduled for September 30th and October 5th. And we already have Mayor Karseck, who has agreed to speak up at those meetings on behalf of North Front Range MPO and staff as well. What we'd like to hear from you all are, what are the top things we should be hitting at those hearings? Because what we've learned is that we'll have three minutes per person to present. And there may be a chance at the end of the meeting, if there's still time left, to raise additional comments, but we really want to have our priority comments at the beginning. So I want to also give a quick timeline of where we are in our process of reviewing this greenhouse gas rule. So we gave that in-depth presentation at the September 2nd Planning Council meeting. After that, we, NFR staff submitted some technical redline edits to CDOT, because at that time, CDOT was saying that they might release a revision to the rule before the rulemaking hearings. And so we wanted to submit those kind of clarifications and minor edits, so that they could possibly incorporate them prior to the rulemaking hearings, kind of getting some of those easy edits out of the way. They ended up opting to not make those edits at that time. They're instead accruing all the edits and will possibly release edits later, based on public comment. We also submitted a letter to the Transportation Commission to request additional data and sufficient time for public comment on the rule, and that was submitted earlier this week on Monday. And then, as I said, we had a discussion at the TAC meeting yesterday. So going forward, what we're anticipating is presenting at those two rulemaking hearings that CDOT is holding, as I mentioned, on September 30th and October 5th. We'll have the council meeting on October 6th, or is it the 7th? Now I think I have my dates wrong. Where we'll either have a discussion on that comment letter or an action item, and possibly a work session, if needed, somewhere in there. We have October 14th marked out, but that may move. And then the deadline to submit comments to CDOT for this rulemaking is October 15th. So on this next section, I want to give that quick background and overview of what's in this greenhouse gas rule. So you've seen this slide before, Hasville 191261, set the greenhouse gas emission reduction targets for the state. The pollution reduction roadmap was finalized earlier this year, and it identified reductions for each sector and strategies for how to achieve those reductions. One of those strategies being greenhouse gas budgets for transportation plans, which is what this rulemaking is about. And then we also have Senate Bill 21260, which added requirements for CDOT to establish processes for both MPOs and CDOT to account for greenhouse gas emissions when they're doing their transportation planning. So because of that, that's bringing about this rulemaking. I wanted to give a little bit more detail. This is a new slide for TAC and for Planning Council. This is more detail on the strategies in the roadmap. So 2030 is like one of those key out years for, for this greenhouse gas effort. And so it took a look at what strategies are in place in the transportation sector, and which could be used to achieve the reductions that the roadmap is targeting for transportation. So really, we have eight million metric tons in hand through electrification and vehicle fleet improvements, fuel efficiency improvements. And there's really only 4.7 million metric tons that are left to be reduced for that 2030 out year out of the total 12.7 that was targeted for transportation. So that's to say, there are a number of strategies that the roadmap recommends for reducing emissions from transportation. The seven strategies are shown on your screen. And altogether, they're intended to get 4.7. There isn't a specific amount of reduction assigned to any particular strategy in the roadmap. And so I think it's important to remember that, that this is just one of the pieces of, of the strategy to reduce emissions from transportation. This schedule slide you've all seen. I think I'll just highlight that we're in the 60-day written comment period right now, ending on October 15th. Those rulemaking hearings start on Friday tomorrow, and go through October 7th around the state. And TC is currently scheduled to adopt the rule at their November meeting. And then I wanted to provide this quick overview on what is in the rule. And as a reminder, the presentations that were given at the September council meeting and the September TAC meeting went into a lot more detail. So if any of this isn't making sense, feel free to ask a question, but also you can refer back to those slides that are posted on our website, because they have the full breakout of how this rule is going to work. So the overview is that the Transportation Commission is proposing to revise existing statewide transportation planning rules. The revision would establish greenhouse gas reduction levels for each MPO and for the non-MPO area, with CDOT being in charge of those non-MPO areas. And those reduction levels are set for four compliance years, 2025, 2030, 2040, and 2050. These requirements apply to the North Front Range MPO's Regional Transportation Plan, which is our long-range plan, and our Short Range Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, beginning on October 1st, 2022. For CDOT, this applies to their 10-year plan and their four-year prioritized plan in the non-MPO areas only. We will determine compliance through travel, travel demand modeling and air quality modeling, along with an off-model analysis of greenhouse gas mitigation measures through a process that's still, that's going to be going on separately from this rulemaking. If the greenhouse gas reduction levels specified in the rule are not met, the, the consequence is that CMAC and STBG funds must be used for projects that reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And same for 10-year plan funds within that MPO, or whichever area that's not meeting the budgets. The 10-year plan funds can only be expended on projects that reduce greenhouse gas emissions. But there is one difference here, which is that the 10-year plan funds for non-regionally significant projects can still go forward. It's just the regionally significant projects that have this requirement attached to them. There is a waiver process included in the rule, which can allow the TC to permit certain projects to go forward. There's certain demonstration that you need to undertake to show that those projects don't substantially increase greenhouse gas emissions. So it doesn't impact all the projects in the region. It is just focused on projects through those funding sources that would be impacted if we're not able to meet the budgets. And then I wanted to highlight the rulemaking hearings. Again, just to say that there are nine of them happening throughout the state. You can attend any of them or all of them. And if you want to attend virtually, there's a registration link shown on the slide. I'll send these slides out as well. And then written public comment needs to be submitted by October 15th to the email address shown on the slide. Okay, I'll take a quick pause there and see if anyone wants to talk about what's in the rule, if they have questions on that, before we dig into the next level of analysis. And feel free to speak up or type it in the, in the chat.
Mr. Chair, if I could, Suzette, or I'm sorry, Madora, it's Scott. Hey, I'm curious on the new slide that you had, and it where you had the additional 4.7 million metric tons there, and the different statuses. Yeah, I'm really curious in how we attach cost benefit, accepted, you know, expected reduction in these kind of things. When we start putting these things in our toolkit, so to speak, what is the expected metric ton reduction, and what is the expected cost? Is there a way that we can get to a dollar per ton? Can we look at things that specifically?
My dog is starting to make noise, sorry about that. And I think that's a great question, and I think the, under, the approach that the state is taking on these is that each strategy would go through some process where it would have a cost benefit analysis, you know, assuming it's a regulation that would typically be required, I believe. And to me, it seems like there, it's sort of in flux, you know, we don't know how much these other strategies are going to achieve yet, or how much it would cost per ton. There's a lot of unknowns in here of, of what's the best way forward with this mix of strategies. So I think that's a really good question. I don't have a good answer.
You know, that's just something I think that we should keep top of mind as we move forward. I just looked at your new slide here, shiny new slide, and it says recommended strategies. Okay, and you've got your little encompassor there that says, yeah, we can get 4.7 million metric tons out of this. But I also looked down at expand public transit system. A front range passenger rail is going to cost how many billion dollars? And what's that worth then per metric ton? There, there is still an accountability to a taxpayer here. And I think it is a fair question to ask as we move forward and looking at these strategies that are going to be written as this greenhouse gas rule. What's it going to cost John Q. Taxpayer? And I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, and just to be clear, these other six that are below are going through separate processes and are not part of this greenhouse gas rule that the TC is considering adopting.
Good, as we get into the mitigation strategies that will be in this rule, that's a fair question as well.
Okay, not seeing other questions at this time. I'm going to move on to this additional data and staff analysis that we wanted to bring to you all tonight. There are two pieces to this. We got some initial modeling results based on the North Front Range model. And then we also want to talk a little bit more about the role of VMT when we talk about greenhouse gas emissions. So as you may recall, the, the figures that are in Table 1 of the rule, which are the greenhouse gas baselines and the greenhouse gas reduction levels, all come out of the statewide travel model, which operates differently than the, the model that we maintain at the North Front Range MPO. It's not as finely, you know, detailed to our region, you know, it's looking at a broader area. And so we have a lot more confidence in our model reflecting conditions in our region. It's been more recently updated. And we'll have greater ability to revise it and iterate on it to try and meet these budgets. So one question we had was, how different are the results for our MPO model compared to what the CDOT statewide model is showing for the North Front Range region? And these are the results that we got a couple days ago. This is for the 2030 forecast year. These results include the expected growth in electric vehicles based on those other state efforts of electrifying the light duty fleet. What you see in the first two data points is the CDOT models. So this is what is reflected in the rule for the 2045 RTP for the North Front Range region is 1.53 million metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions. The next bar over is basically a very similar analysis, but run through our travel model, and it shows 1.63 million metric tons. So it's a substantial difference between the two. It's a higher amount of greenhouse gas emissions when we use our model. We're still digging into, to the analysis to try and figure out why that is. I mean, we do know that they're just different models. You can put in the same inputs and get different outputs. They have different sensitivities. So to some extent, there's, there isn't going to be a great answer, other than they're different models. But we do want to try and understand a little bit more why they're different. The other three that we have on here are different scenarios that we ran through our travel model to get a sense of how different the results could be if we make different investment choices. So the next two bars over are both 1.65 billion metric tons. One of those is a transit scenario. And then we also have a no build scenario, where we keep our transportation system the same as it is in 2020, but add on all the population and job growth in 2030. And then the last scenario there is the I-25 scenario, where instead of investing in our arterial roads and collector roads, we pull all that money out and we build the third general purpose lane of I-25. And that actually had slightly higher emissions, but these are all very, you know, relatively close together between 1.63 and 1.67. There isn't a lot of gap between the different scenarios that we tested. This slide also shows the VMT from each scenario shown in the green line among the top, which again shows the greatest difference between the CDOT model and the North Front Range model, and not a lot of variation between the different scenarios. So a little bit more on this analysis. What the table shows is just for the North Front Range scenario with, for our plan and the statewide take on that, and comparing the VMT, comparing the greenhouse gas emissions, and then comparing the amount of greenhouse gas per VMT. So the VMT is, has a difference of 12% when you look at the two different models. The greenhouse gas emissions are 7% different. So the North Front Range model in both cases is higher. We have more VMT and more greenhouse gas. But if you look at greenhouse gas per VMT, the statewide results were actually higher by 6%. And so that helps answer some of our questions about what is the role of VMT, which I'll be getting into later as well. But VMT is not the final word. It's not the, the primary determinant of your greenhouse gases. It's also very important how your operating speeds and congestion are in your region. And that's what we're thinking is part of this difference between the model results. The other takeaways on this slide, I think I covered on the previous slide, that the, the difference between the CDOT model and our model are substantial. So one question that we want to raise to you all, and I'll turn it over to Suzette, is should we request that the MPO modeling results be used for the greenhouse gas baselines and greenhouse gas reduction levels in the rule instead of the statewide model results? And in our previous meetings, we've talked about how this could be important, that it would be probably the process we'd want to use going forward, using the MPO model, because it's in-house. We have the ability to make adjustments ourselves. So I'll turn it over to Suzette to, to lead this little discussion.
Yeah, thanks, Madora. You know, I, when I'm listening to the conversation, and we've talked about this before. So if you remember in Table 1, we had the baseline, and then we had a reduction level. What we're talking about is that baseline column. In, in the rule right now, it has the CDOT numbers. And we would like to have them incorporate the MPO numbers, because going forward, we're going to be using the MPO model to determine whether we meet that budget or not. So from staff perspective, we would like to request that change in numbers in the table. So that's, that's the thought feedback that I'd like to hear from council, to hear if that request makes sense to you, or if you have other thoughts on that.
I mean, to me, if it makes sense to you guys, it makes sense to me. So, I mean, I would want to support whatever was easier for you to accomplish, you know, our, our shared goals. And so do you think that the, that they're amenable to doing that?
And not, and I'll let Madora answer this as well, but the conversations that we've had is that they did say, even before the rule was released, that they were thinking that the MPOs would want to use their data set. Just for that reason, because if we use CDOT data set, we're going to have to be sending information to them, and they're going to have to be running it, which I don't think they really want to do, quite frankly.
Yeah, then to, to me, that makes total sense, and I think we should use the MPOs.
Does anybody else have any comments on that, up, down, sideways, as we care?
This is Will. I totally agree with Commissioner Stevens.
Okay.
I'd agree with this, Brett. I'd agree that we should, should highlight that for them and ask for that, because I think in Part 2, and the other thing it does is it really is part of our communication back to them, that like, you know, this is, this is, I don't want to use too, too harsh a language, but this is kind of a bad data scenario right now, right? That they sat down and did math, and came up with one number, and we sat down doing math and coming up with another. So I think it highlights the issues we have within the rulemaking as it is anyway. So, no, I think that's a good idea to go forward with that.
Okay, and Mark Clark agrees as well. In chat, anybody else? Okay, sounds like we're all in agreement to ask for a request to change Table 1 to reflect the MPO numbers.
Great, thank you, Suzette. Okay, the next deep dive topic is on the role of vehicle miles traveled, and this gets a, I want to apologize, it gets a little bit in the weeds, but as we saw from the model results, VMT wasn't the only factor that impacted greenhouse gas emissions. And what we know through the moves model, which is the EPA's air quality model that we're using for this, that we also use for ozone conforming, is that greenhouse gas emissions are variable based on VMT, also fleet mix, the speed of traffic, and the fuels that are used. So you can change any of those and change your greenhouse gas emissions. And the reason why I want to bring this up is because in reviewing Senate Bill 260, which requires a greenhouse gas consideration in transportation plans, and reviewing the rule, I'm seeing some inconsistencies in how greenhouse gas and VMT are talked about. So in Senate Bill 260, what it specifically requires is that the Transportation Commission established procedures and guidelines for CDOT and MPOs to take additional steps in the planning process for major capacity projects to account for greenhouse gas pollution and VMT expected to result from such projects. So it does refer to VMT in that opening section. But when it gets down to what the requirements are, it's, the requirement is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, to help achieve statewide targets in 1261. It doesn't require reducing VMT. And it also requires considering the role of land use and developing strategies to encourage land use decisions that reduce VMT. So VMT is in there in terms of, of thinking about greenhouse gas emissions, but I just don't think that it's the only way we can do it. So in the proposed rule, a lot of the text focuses on VMT reduction strategies, but it does include illustrative greenhouse gas mitigation measure on medium heavy-duty electric charging stations, also hydrogen refueling infrastructure, which would reduce greenhouse gas emissions and not change VMT. The cost benefit analysis, which was released last week, gave more detail on how the production levels were set. And it describes the scenarios that they tested that inform those reduction levels. They described them as three broad categories of VMT reduction measures. But we know that one of the measures they tested was bus electrification. It's included in two of the scenarios, and they describe it, but they don't assess the costs of that, because according to the cost benefit analysis, the rule is focused on VMT reductions. And so there's just, there's a disconnect that I'm seeing between how the rule is handling reductions from non-VMT strategies. And so one of the questions we wanted to pose is, should we be advocating for the rule to address greenhouse gas reductions through operations measures and fleet improvements, or only through VMT measures? And one caveat I want to add here is they are trying to, to draw a line between the light duty electrification, because, as I mentioned at the beginning, those strategies already have a greenhouse gas reduction target assigned to them, more or less, and so they don't want to double count. And I think, we think that is a valid concern, but there are these other types of emission reduction measures that we think may need to be incorporated. And Suzette, if you could help me facilitate this conversation.
So when we're talking about VMT versus the greenhouse gas reduction, so think about, what is the, what is the role of this proposal? Is it to reduce greenhouse gas and VMT, or is it, is the overarching reason to reduce greenhouse gases? And I think we saw a little confusion on this in the ETRP rulemaking as well, where they were sort of mixing these two things up. I mean, if we waved a magic wand and said, fleet mix, the fleet is now totally electric, we would have no emissions coming out of the fleet, but we would still have a VMT issue. So thinking about what Madora was saying is that, in the short term especially, as the fleet is still mostly, you know, internal combustion engines, how, how do we talk about VMT in opposed to greenhouse gases? And I think the measures that we're talking about, it, it would, does include other things that are a little broader. And I think congestion is a big one, quite frankly, that it plays a big role in greenhouse gas emissions. So the question really is, should we make comments about looking at this to pick up that broader picture and not just VMT?
This is Brett again. This, and Madora, this was one of the main things for me that, that really spit out to me is that if we're trying to reduce greenhouse gases, we cannot necessarily equate, let's say, one for one with VMT, right? Because I think to your point, number one, we, the example I gave to my staff, my, my current truck doesn't burn as dirty as my truck from years ago. my, my current truck doesn't burn as dirty as my truck from years ago, which didn't burn as dirty as my truck from 20 years prior. That's number one. You know, number two, um, uh, we, even electrification of, of the grid or, or um putting on electric vehicles, there's still power being generated somewhere somehow. And that, that, that power generation is not a vehicle mile traveled. It's, it's a, it's a power station somewhere that may or may not be creating greenhouse gases. So uh the, the, there's, to me, it seems like there's something missing in that equation when we just talk about VMTs. So that to, to my mind, we do need to point this out. We do need to, to, I don't know if it's asking for more for clarification or, or a better measurement, if you will. Um, and then along those same lines, when I think back to the presentation, it seems to me like the, 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 how they're trying to measure the success is still through VMT. So in 30 years, it seems to me, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because I, I might absolutely be reading it wrong, if there's, if they're measuring VMT in 30 years and we still have population increase, yada, blah, et cetera, it seems to me like there's a disconnect between whether or not we're still at uh certain levels of certain metric tons of greenhouse gases.
Yeah, I think, I think you raise a good point is that we are in a very fast growing area and to try to reduce VMT overall, um, that, that is really, really hard to do per capita perhaps, but left overall, when you have a, such a fast growing population, that, that's a very tall order to, to meet.
And I do, yeah, I don't want to get too into the weeds, but the other really weird thing is that if, if there's, so since they're using a stick instead of a carrot and they'll defund, they, they won't provide funding to programs and you, you get more congestion, which is why I like the discussion about congestion as well. When you get more congestion, you get more diversion, which increases VMTs. And, and you know, I can even just anecdotally from having lived in LA, the, you know, I, I, I would jump off the freeways at, at rush hour and add 20 miles in my drive, but could get it done in a half hour, half hour faster. Um, I do have just one more comment too relative to the land use. I, my personal point of view is that with, with uh TC or C-DOT coming up with land use planning guidelines, that's just, they're way out in the deep end. They're weighing over their head. They're not land use planners. I, I don't, I, that really concerns me.
Okay, um, anybody else?
Yeah, I think we should be, look broader than just the um VMTs, um, you know, to include other reduction measures. Um, it, you know, other things will reduce, reduce greenhouse gases beyond those clearly, right? I mean, so um, and as far as with the land use planning, I mean, if we're able to use, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, it is a weird, it is weird that that's a mitigation strategy, but um, I mean, if we're able to use some of our, if our communities are using that and we can piggyback on that and use that as one of our MPO mitigation strategies, then just puts another tool in our toolbox, I guess. It's just that the MPO wouldn't be, wouldn't clearly be the ones um doing that land planning, so.
I think you're jumping ahead, but yes, that's a good point. When I say you're jumping.
I was jumping ahead and I only, and I only brought it up because Brett was talking about, about that, that piece. But, but yes, I, I do agree that we should use more than the VMT.
Okay, yeah, and we will get to, to get to some of that um in a future slide. But anybody else have any comments about the role of VMT that, feel free to put it in chat if you prefer to do that, um, using other things besides VMT as a measure.
Um, if I may, I wanted to speak to one thing that um, that counselor, or yeah, Counselor Peyton brought up, um, which is what the rule is trying to do, you know, and how we'll measure success, because I think there is a difference. The rules does have greenhouse gas emissions as the, the barometer. And it goes through the model, um, the travel model and air quality model. And so operations measures, um, fleet conditions, all of that gets wrapped it up into it. And so I don't think we have a concern about the, the, the reduction levels because those do account for all these other factors. Um, the issue is when we talk about the strategies and how those reduction levels are set and the mitigation measures, there seems to be this um very close minded view that only VMT measures are important. And then you're losing that bigger picture of how everything works together. And, and just like you were saying with um congestion, encouraging people to take longer trips to avoid the congestion, you know, we, travelers care a lot about time. They don't care as much about the miles. So I hope that um answers some of the questions you were bringing up.
It does, yeah, thank you, Madora.
I think so it sounds like um that we do want to go ahead and make those comments about using other things besides VMT.
Okay. Wonderful. We're just going along so quickly. Okay, so now we want to get to the part where we bring up those comments that we presented at the previous meetings to council and to TAC, and then um get more of your insight on those, see what other comments and concerns you have. And so we're going to do this through a new tool that we're testing out. It's called Mural. There is a link that Alex just put in the chat, so you can click on that link. You shouldn't need to sign in. Um, if anyone, if it's asking you to sign in, let me know, because then I, we gave you the wrong link. Um, and what we're going to do is um, I'm going to turn it over to Alex so he can explain how it works, and then we'll, we'll talk through the areas of support and the areas of concern.
Great, thank you, Madora. So if you click on the link, uh, it should bring you up to something that looks like this, and you can type in your name. Um, and other times when we've used this, if the link doesn't work by clicking on it, you can copy and paste. I just want you to know that we did not choose what animal you show up as. So I'm sorry to whoever's a sheep or a fox or an owl. The stereotypes are not based on MPO staff input. I just want you to know. So um putting things onto the whiteboard is very much like a post-it note exercise. So what you can do is just double click on the screen and it will bring up something for you to type in. And um later on, we will be able to vote on things and prioritize things. Um, so Madora will be going through what each of these mean. If you don't, if Mural is not working for you, um, feel free to add comments out loud or put them into the chat and I can make sure that they get put onto the screen. Um, and let me know if you have any questions, I'm happy to help.
Looks like you have people jumping in there already. Great.
Sounds great. Okay, so share my screen again. All right, so first we're going to talk about the areas of support. This we presented at both the meetings earlier this month. Um, and the areas of support that staff have identified are the purpose of the rule and the co-benefits to reducing ozone and expanding transportation options is the first area. Another one is the existence of the waiver process that could allow projects to go forward even if they do not qualify as a greenhouse gas mitigation measure. But there are important safety and operations projects that we fund through CMAC and STBG. Um, and, and through the tenure plan fund process as well. And so that waiver process could allow those projects to go forward possibly. Um, we think that the greenhouse gas mitigation measure process does need more time and also more flexibility to be updated. And so while we'd rather, we knew more about it this time for the rulemaking, uh, we do think having it as a separate process makes sense. Uh, the creation of the state interagency consultation team, we think will be helpful for resolving issues as they come up with this rule. And so that we support the creation of that new um multi-agency effort. And then we also support that the rule is not saying funds will be withheld from the MPO. If we're not able to meet the reduction levels, it changes which projects can get the funding, but the funding amount doesn't change. The funds still come through the MPO and can be awarded to projects. Uh, so with that, I want to go over to the whiteboard and Alex, I don't know if you're able to help Mark with his question. Oh, here we go. Great. Um, I think I'll delete that comment from Alex. So you can zoom in and zoom out and also just click around to move the whiteboard on your screen. And curious at this point if anyone has any other areas of support they want to add uh to the whiteboard. If you do, you can just go ahead and um add a sticky note or double click. And we'll just give this a few minutes, um, see if anyone wants to add any areas of support before we move on to areas of concern.
Can I ask a question on the areas of um support? So um, sorry, I'm like, so the rule purpose, so is that, is that basically saying, you know, that we're support the purpose of the rule, which is to, we're in favor of reducing greenhouse gases? Is that, is that what we're saying by supporting the rule purpose?
That, that was what I was trying to convey, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Also, if anyone's having issues with Mural, then feel free to use this time to speak up and we can try and help with that.
So Madora, are you seeing um which the comment in chat about the 90% reduction?
Oh, yes, okay. Yes, and that 90% reduction, that's the, that's the 1261 target for across all sectors of the Colorado economy to reduce 90% of greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. When you look at the transportation, the target that's put in the greenhouse gas roadmap, it's 99%. It's even more substantial, um, which is partly because of the, the anticipated effects of electrification on uh vehicles and, and the way they're accounting for it is just the tailpipe emissions at this point. And any electricity provision would go into the electricity category. Okay, we've got a new area of support on supporting mitigation options, um, help with meeting the reductions. All right, how about we move on and I'll, it takes a bit of time to get through the um, the concerns. How about we move on to that? And um same thing where if you have the mural up on your screen, you can start adding other concerns there that you don't see reflected that you have. Um, but we'll start going through the ones that staff have identified. So um, these are largely the same as what you saw at the presentations earlier this month. The first one being greenhouse gas reduction levels may not be feasible and are based on strategies outside of the controlled MPOs, such as substantial changes in land use, um major changes to transit operations that we're not able to fund through our federal funding programs that we have control over. Um, what we did for these sets of slides is uh we wanted to identify suggestions or options or kind of next steps, you know, not just identifying the concern, but what we're going to do about it. For this one, we've just got the data back um a couple of days ago, and so we're still looking at it and don't have concrete options to present to you all at this time. Um, but we, you know, potentially this could be resolved by using our different scenarios out of the MPO model and looking at those deltas to make the reduction level. Um, or C-DOT has developed three different scenarios that maybe one of those would make more sense rather than what's currently in the rule, which is um based on the full set of scenarios that they developed, kind of the, the three layer. Um, until Elizabeth's question um in the chat about receiving all of the data or just pieces. So at this point, we had only requested four scenarios for 2030 because of this question of we didn't know which scenario would be most useful for informing the rule. So we wanted to test several of them for a single year and then go back out and ask for the scenario that we thought made the most sense for all of the years, because it does take a bit of work for them to run it all. And so we have received um the scenarios that we've requested so far, and then we need to go out and request those scenario, the scenarios that we care about for the other compliance years. Okay, so the next area of concern is that the rulemaking schedule may not accommodate data-driven requirements or data-driven comments. We, as I mentioned at the top, we did submit that comment letter identifying all of the data that we think would be helpful for providing good comments back to C-DOT. Uh, and so they have that comment letter that was sent earlier this week, and we plan to keep raising this issue. We are within 30 days of the end of the public comment period and we haven't received everything that we've asked for. So um we do still would like more time in the public comment period to be able to provide robust, meaningful public comment. Um, the third one here is the rule lacks specificity on processes, roles and responsibilities for certain elements that will make it more difficult to comply and kind of confusing about the steps of the process. And what we would like to do is um get your go-ahead for NFRMPO staff to kind of dig into the weeds on that and make specific recommendations that would go into that comment letter for your review, um, unless you want to discuss some of that here as a group, um, but that is our recommendation. And the other thing I want to say while we're on this slide is that these three concerns are the staff's top priorities once, once we went through all this. Um, these are the things that we think are the most important to get resolved. Um, but we will have a priority voting process later on um in tonight's meeting. So I think we'll pause here and just see if there are any questions on these concerns.
Yeah, I was, I was going to suggest that as well. I think um the big thing is when we're talking about that last bullet about the lack of process, there's a lot of places in the rule where this is showing up. So I think just letting us dig through some of that, which you'll see as we get the letter more formalized, but if there's anything specific that all of you have noticed or you think is an area of concern, please let us know. I would also say on one and two, if we get data, if we get the data and have time to analyze the data, these comments and areas of concern may change um based on that. So, so just keep that in mind. So for example, if we get the day, the rest of the data that were requested and we're able to do the analysis in a timely manner, um, then some of this may change.
I'll go on to the next slide, um, because we'll have more time once we get back to the whiteboard too to talk about these if there are questions. So the next two areas of concern, we wanted to get your feedback on. Um, so the first one is uh, we think the rule should require a periodic reassessment of the greenhouse gas reduction levels, but we see two ways to implement that. And we wanted to see if you had feedback on which approach you thought would be better. Suzette, do you want me to read those or do you want to take it from here?
I, I was going to say it doesn't, it doesn't matter. And I said, why, my facilitation doesn't, isn't, I'm not sure it's adding a lot, but we go, so go ahead, Madora.
Okay, so the first option is uh adding a requirement for the state interagency consultation team to conduct a review at least every four years is, is what I was thinking could make sense. So that group could um assess if a, a change is needed and then bring it back to TC to conduct a new rulemaking. Option B would put it in the hands of C-DOT um to conduct a review based on when certain elements that go into the reduction levels change, such as when the state's EV target changes or when federal CAFE standards are updated and then incorporate it into the air quality model, which takes a bit of time, um, and other. And other milestones such as those, and you know, there are different ways to mix and match these options, but I just wanted to present a few ways we could implement that. We do want to try and make our comments as specific as possible so that they can just bring them into the rule without having to figure out how to implement it. So that's what we're, we're trying to think through and open to your thoughts on this.
Yeah, maybe to add on to this, what the difference between option A and option B is that we know that things are going to change because every four years when we do our regional transportation plans, we do an update on the socioeconomics, we look at different things that are in there. When, when we get a new moves model, that's going to change how the model operates and how things operate. So there are things that are going to change and we know that. So the option A is really saying, let's set a schedule every four years and just set a schedule for that and have it change. Or option B really is saying, if we hit a trigger, like the CAFE standard changes or we have a new model, then we do an evaluation. So that's really the difference between option A. One's a set time, the other one's triggers. And Elizabeth is saying every four years is good with her aligning with the tips and the steps.
So I guess just thinking out loud, but doing it every four years or again, just now that thought ears that that maybe helps with setting budgets and expenditures and whatnot on you know, every four years, we might know what new expenses might be coming up or, or not versus guessing when, when EPA changes CAFE models as an example.
Correct. Now, if you pick the ever four years, and Mayor Platoon Isabel is also spreading this at time. The downside of picking every four years is that it's saying the moves model changes in the middle of that. You're not going to be accounting for it until the next update, but you probably won't be using it anyhow until that next four-year update. So, so in some ways, I think, you know, either way is, is good that the, the second one with the triggers is a little harder to track, I would say. Looks like we have another person saying the four years is good.
Yeah, it's just easy to wrap your head around.
Yep, I think so. Okay.
Okay. Well, then let's ask our next question. So this also relates to keeping those reduction levels responsive to changing conditions. And so this is related to the growth forecast for the region and the possibility of MPO boundary changes. What's the best way that we can have the greenhouse gas reduction levels account for those change? Two things that we thought of as staff, one is to use per capita greenhouse gas reduction levels in the rule instead of a total reduction level. That way, if these things change, we don't have to go back in and revise the rule. Another option is to, you know, when you have major changes like that of growth forecasts that are substantially different, which you have to define, then going in and revising the, the reduction levels in the rule. So those are the two options we came up with. There may be another way to tackle this.
Yeah, so so again, what Madora is talking about is we have another change that is affecting how but how the reduction level. So how do we account for that change that we know is coming? You know, we know there's going to be socio-economic changes. We know the MPO boundary is going to change. We know those things are going to change. How do we account for those things? What is the best way? And the, the two options that we came up with was a reduction level per, per capita. And I think Councilmember Clark from Loveland requested that information, which is a piece of information I think we're still waiting on. We have not seen that one yet. And then to update the rules, baselines and reduction levels each time there's a growth forecast is issued. Again, that's for us, that's on a four-year cycle because we get that updated with our regional transportation plans. Thoughts on that?
Suzette, are you suggesting one over the other? I mean, I mean, or do you think they're, they're both?
I mean, I think either one of them would work. I don't, you know, from my opinion, almost the per capita might be easier because then, you know, we're just talking about per capita and we're not having to worry about changing the baselines. But, but the baseline would work as well.
Okay.
Maybe, let me back up and ask this. Do you think this is a comment we should be making? And, and then do you have an opinion about A or B?
Well, I think it is a comment we should be making because, I mean, it doesn't seem like, you know, like there's, we're clearly growing communities and the census showed that this last census. I mean, there are other communities that really have kind of maxed out on their growth. So I think, I mean, for us, I think it's really important to be able to, to include this as a comment. And I mean, I guess I would go with option A. Well, and there's also the potential for MPO boundary changes, which we don't even know yet. I mean, that could, we could, I mean, that could change in next year, as soon as next year.
That's right. Councilmember Peyton needs your comment.
I'd add into that, that, you know, when you're just looking at forecasting, you're and we're, we're adding guesswork on top of guesswork. So I think it makes sense to use a per capita measurement.
We're hoping the state demographer has a, a way to make guesswork somewhat, somewhat accurate. That is their, that is their will, Alex, for sure.
Oh, no doubt, you know, she does a really good job, but it, but you also don't, I mean, the other things that could change, right, is, is, you know, the economy turns around and people stop moving to Colorado or something and, and, you know, but when we're moving towards a number that doesn't exist anymore.
Okay, it sounded like now the per capita is turning out to be the preference. Mayor Carspec, Mayor Platoon Isabel, Mayor Platoon Clark, the capita relating towards that. Okay, great. On to the next one.
Thank you. Okay, this is the last slide of areas of concern and these, we don't have options here. What we're presenting are suggestions from staff and it's sort of an all of the above. If there are multiple suggestions, we think we should suggest all of them. And so I'll just read through them all and then see what comments you have. If you have any suggestions for a different approach or have any questions about these concerns. Okay, so the first one here, most of these greenhouse gas mitigation measures that are identified as illustrative examples in the rule cannot be implemented by MPOs. As I mentioned earlier, our federal funds can't go to ongoing transit operations. We don't have direct land use authority. There are other examples like that. So the suggestions we would like to put forward is that the measures should include operational improvements that reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Those are projects that we do all the time and do have an impact. Suggestion two is the implementers of the greenhouse, greenhouse gas mitigation measures should not be limited to only CDOT and MPO, which is how it's currently defined in section one, which is the definition section. And we think local government efforts should also count. The next one, greenhouse gas mitigation measure reporting process may be onerous without providing a lot of value. So one suggestion we would like to put forward is allowing bundling of measures. You know, so instead of a specific bike ped project, maybe it's a set of bike ped projects and you can assign a value to that instead of you know, identifying a lot of individual projects. And then the last is the enforcement mechanism is overly restrictive on projects funded with CMAC and STBG. These projects are selected through our federally required metropolitan planning process where we look at all of the factors that influence how our transportation system functions. And so one thing we could suggest is that the non-regionally significant projects funded through CMAC and STBG would get the same exception as the 10-year plan funds that's provided in the rule, that they could still go forward even if they're not reducing greenhouse gases without needing to get a waiver from the TC. So with that, I'll pause and see if any of that was unclear or what comments you have.
Yeah, so maybe just on that last bullet, when we're talking about regionally significant versus non-regionally significant projects, you know, we're using the regionally significant definition that we have currently in our tip in our plan. So that, if I get it wrong, very much correct. And so I think it's adding at least one lane mile of capacity or a major transit facility of some sort. So, so most of what we do when we do the call for projects, if you think about it, we buy, for CMAC, we've been buying buses for the transit operations. We do things like, you know, signal timing, we are doing CNG vehicle purchases. None of that is originally significant project. So that, and STBG, we're doing things like intersection improvements, things like that. And that again, is not a really significant project. So just keep that in mind as we're talking about this. That's, those are the projects that we're saying, if we don't meet it, that those should still be able to go forward because they're not usually significant.
Well, I guess on that third point, and this is truly a question I don't, that I don't know the answer to, is, is the authority of the state to stand in the way of federal funding when a project or municipality otherwise meets all other federal requirements for that project? I don't know if you can answer that or that's necessary. That's just a question that popped up in my head when you were mentioning that third point.
Yeah, and we asked, we did ask FHWA about that. And a lot of states, well, federal, federal funding comes into the state and so then the state can add on more requirements. And so, yes, they do have the authority to do that. And I think also the first one gets back to Commissioner Stevens' point about being allowed to, whatever the local governments are doing, we should be also, because it's in the region, we should be able to take credit for that, whether it's a land use or something else that they're doing, we should be able to take credit for that as a mitigation measure.
Yeah, and I'm still in favor of that. I think that there's, there's going to be a lot of, I mean, I think these, you know, those efforts by the municipalities inform, you know, what we're doing and, and so there's a nexus there. And I think that I think those, those projects should definitely be allowed to count. I mean, if they, otherwise, how could they be? I mean, because the MPO doesn't deal with land use, otherwise how, I mean, I don't understand how that would work. So I think, but I think, you know, so I do think those land use, you know, and I think that there are a lot of communities that are employing those measures and I think that that should count. You know, we're all communities that are part of the MPO, so.
Yeah, and I think the way it's written right now restricts it to CDOT and MPO. And that's what we're suggesting is saying that the local government should count as well. So, so any other comments on these three?
I would say yes, let's include these, these suggestions.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say is I'd just say yes to all of them. I guess that's four, four of them or whatever, but, but definitely.
Right. Mayor Carspec agrees. Local town Isabel agrees. So, okay, I think we're off and running to the next one. I would say you guys have just jumped right in on this whiteboard. It's great.
Yes, okay. We'll go through these comments that have been added as areas of concern and make sure that we have all of these thoughts on there. Give that a few minutes and then we're going to do a voting exercise, which I'll explain once we get through that. So first, I just want to read through the comments that came through. This, the ones on the left pane are the ones that you saw in the, in the presentation. So an area of concern someone added is unsure when we'll have information about what the possible mitigation measures might be and how much they'll count. It's a really great point. Another concern, this is just a modeling exercise. The actual results won't be measured to see if the rule has achieved success. It's very true. I think one issue here though is, you know, greenhouse gases come from so many different sources. There isn't a great way to identify just the emissions from transportation unless you do modeling. So in my view, we're kind of stuck with it, with this goal of trying to account for where the emissions are coming from. Another concern, why would CMAC funding be restricted when its entire purpose is to improve air quality and more specifically ozone? It's a really good question.
And, and I think honestly, it's sort of like what they did in 260 with the MMOF funds. You know, they said, if you don't, if you don't meet the greenhouse gas requirements, then we will restrict your MMOF funds to projects that reduce greenhouse gases and that's all you can use MMOF funds for anyhow. So it's, it's sort of a circular kind of a thing. And I think CMAC in a lot of ways is the same.
I know, but one thing I see happening is, so right now with our CMAC process, we fund the most cost-effective and most reducing projects. And we're inclusive of all the different types of operations or, you know, fleet improvements. And so if the way this rule is written, it does seem like they want to only look at VMT reduction measures. So it sounds like it might restrict the CMAC to just, you know, bike ped and not allow transit capital because that's not one of the, I mean, we still, we know that the mitigation measures will be flushed out after. But based on the illustrative examples in the rule, transit capital isn't included. Intersection improvements, these things that produce a lot of emissions benefits based on the approved FHWA calculator that we're using. So that is, I think
That's weird to me. The transit wouldn't be, I mean, that, that, that confuses me the most, I guess, is why transit wouldn't be considered a, you know, I mean, is, I mean, that, that to me goes against reason, but I
Yeah, and I, yeah, I think the transit piece is interesting. So transit operations are in there, expansion of transit. But the capital improvements that we often provide funding to to convert buses to cleaner buses, doesn't seem like it would be captured.
Yeah.
And I would also, go ahead.
What's that, Suzette?
Sorry. I was talking over you. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I just, I, no, I, I'm just, I'm kind of just baffled by the whole, like, how are you going to have transit if you can't build these projects that complement it? So I, I don't understand why that wouldn't be a project that would help reduce greenhouse gas emissions.
Yeah, I think that the other interesting thing, and I think it was on the previous set of slides that Madora had, is that using STBG or CMAC, we're limited to the amount that we can't fund transit operations with STBG at all. And, and CMAC is limited to new service and three years. So, so it has its limits from the federal requirements. So, so some of that comes with that restriction on it to start with.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more comments up on the mural and/or in the chat. So how about we go ahead and try this voting exercise? So what the goal here is, as I mentioned earlier, we have a very limited time during the rulemaking hearings to raise our points. And then also with the variety of issues we found, we do want to prioritize in the comment letter as well and kind of bring those key concerns to the top. So we would like you all to place a vote on the three topics on here that you think are the most salient, that need the most attention. And so how this will work And so how this will work, let me, sorry, I got to change something here. Okay, and instructions, now there's, in the voting process. And this little graphic will pop up once I start the voting, but it's also on the screen in case you want, you forget and want to refer back to it. And a quick way to navigate around here is this button near the top, this outline. You can click and it will bring you to the different areas of this whiteboard. Okay, so we're going to start the voting. All right, so you each have three cards that you can vote on. And as it says here, you click the card to place your vote. If you want to change your vote and undo it, you can shift click. You can also put all three votes on one card. So you can just click that card three times if that's the top priority for you. And your vote is anonymous.
So Madora, quickly, are we voting on both areas of support and concern? Especially if.
That was what I was, yes, you have three votes. And I was thinking you could do it for support or concern, depending on which of these cards is most meaningful to you. They could be all concerns, they could be all support, it could be a mix. And maybe, Alex, if you could tell me where most people have voted? Because this may take some time to look through, to zoom in and find the topics.
And if there's anybody who isn't able to vote or get me a mural to work, you can send me a message and I will write it down and we'll, we'll count your feedback in the overall tally.
Let's try to give it just maybe two more minutes.
Madora, three of the people are you, me, and Suzette. It looks like Will Jones and Laney are the two people that have three votes left each, if they'd like to vote.
Thank you for the update. All right, well, let's wrap it up then. And how do I do this? End voting session. All right, and then we see our results. So several of them got two votes. We have four key concerns that showed up, and then several just got one vote. So the concern, or the topics getting the most votes were about restricting CMAC when the purpose is to improve air quality, using the MPO model, reassessment of the greenhouse gas reduction levels, and the enforcement mechanism being overly restrictive. I'm forgetting how this aligns with the staff identified priorities, but I think it overlaps.
My memory is at least two do.
Okay, great. Well, thanks so much. And for people who weren't able to vote, you can, as Alex said, send it in to us afterwards, too. And we can consider that. So let's go back here. So next steps, as I mentioned, we have the rulemaking hearings coming up. So we'll use the information you provided to help streamline our comments. We will have that public comment letter drafted for your review at the council meeting and possibly schedule a work session. I'm feeling kind of confident at this point, but we'll see. We may not need that work session. And then submitting the public comment as soon as possible. October 15th is the deadline, but we would like to get it in sooner if we can. Great, I guess I'll turn over to Suzette and see if there are any other final thoughts or, you know, we're open to other questions or discussion as well. We do have a little bit of extra time, so.
Yeah, I was going to say that I think that the big piece for us that's still missing, as you saw in the presentation, is, is the data piece and the assessment of a model. And we're still missing some per capita data. So, so I think those are the holes that we're missing. So if we don't get those in time to be able to make the comments and finalize them for the council meeting, then we would probably like to have another work session to go over just that specific thing. So we can get that wrapped up in time. If it's all right with you, we'd just like to sort of wait and see when or if we need it because that's really where we're, we're missing the information. So that's the pieces that we're missing, I think. From my perspective, I think you've given us really good feedback on how to structure the comments going forward. I think we can get, I think we've gotten most of them. There's just a few that are lacking in data, I think, at this point. So is, do you feel comfortable with that, Madora, that we have enough to start really getting a good structure on the comments?
Yeah, I do. I really appreciate all the feedback we've received tonight.
Okay, so we'll leave that open for now. We'll work on those. Hopefully, if we can get these little bits and pieces, we can finalize it at the October meeting. Mayor Carspec, you are going to be our open person for the first, for the three minutes for the two public hearings. And we'll try to get as much information to you ahead of time as possible, so.
Sounds good.
To those comments. Is that, is there any other comments or questions to that? That's, I think we'll wrap it up on what we have for tonight.
Awesome. Yeah, go ahead, Kristen, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. So, so you, so the comments that Will is going to make are on these, the Larimer and Weld hearings. Is that when he would be speaking? Yeah, and those are, but those are also open to the public if other folks wanted to speak. Is that right?
Yes, it's open to every, it's open to everybody. But the way they structured the public comment, you know, we're used to the Air Supply Control Commission, that if you file for party status and you say, we want 10 minutes, they give you 10 minutes. The way C dot is structured is they want everybody to have an opportunity to at least talk for two to three minutes, depending on how many people are on, so that everybody at least gets an initial chance to say what they want to say. And then if everybody says something, then they can open it up again for more detailed comments. But we don't know that we'll get that. So I think we need to get our two to three minutes pretty concise.
Yeah, no, I agree. And with that, I do think just maybe, I know it didn't win the most votes, but like saying kind of, I mean, just starting out by saying, we support the, you know, spirit of the rulemaking. We just, we have these concerns, kind of. I mean, I think it's always good to start out by saying something that we support. You know, so even that wasn't, that wasn't a vote getter necessarily on the, you know, things that we support. I still think it wouldn't be the bad lead in, in making the comments. Just, it shows that we, you know, we're, we're willing to, you know, I don't know, it just shows good faith to me.
Yeah, and I, I think you're saying, start with the positive and not just say, here's the things you find wrong.
Yeah, because I think it'll be received better, you know, if we're saying, you know, we really, you know, we're really committed to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and it's why we want to get it right. And, you know, I think, I mean, in my opinion, that's, and kind of knowing Will, I bet he would always want to start on a positive note, too.
Yeah. Good point. Great. Anything else? Suzette, looks like we're good. All right. Well, thank you, Madora. Thank you, Suzette. And thank you, everyone who went in attendance. This was very productive and ended ahead of time. I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Have a great night.
Thanks, everyone.
Right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Madora, I'll email you the chat log so that you have the comments.
Oh, great. Thank you.
In case that helps at all.
All right.